Good evening. I would like to make a public announcement that tonight we had on the agenda originally a special action meeting, which will not be held tonight. We're going to move forward with our work session agenda. But let's start with a pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Holman. You made eye contact, you win.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. All right. Before we start our discussions, this is the 1027th meeting, October 7th. The board did meet an executive session this evening, October 7th, 2014, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, litigation, and negotiations. So that should be noted by the public. So, let's move forward to our work agenda. Dr. Dietrich, you want to...
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we do have two items that are informational and educational. And the first item is in regard to our physical education and health program, K-12. I'm pleased to note that we have at least 25 members of our health and phys ed department here this evening. They look great. I don't typically see them in shirts and ties, so it's a little bit different for me, and dresses and everything, but you guys look great. Thank you for coming this evening. We do have a presentation planned. Carolyn Bar Hubbard will make some introductions and introduce the program. And I think we have a PowerPoint ready to go also. So, Ms. Bar Hubbard?
Do you want to let her stand at the podium? You want to let her stand at the podium? Or you want to sit? Why don't you do it at the podium? Why don't you do it at the podium? The cameras will get a better shot, so they can do both, catch the presentation and you talking.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Holman, associated members of the North Penn School District, and community members. My name is Carolyn Bar Hubbard. I am the instructional coordinator, K-12, for special area teachers. Tonight, I am representing the Health and Physical Education Department and their vision of a Healthy Body, Healthy Mind campaign. First, I want to thank the board and Dr. Dietrich for allowing us to come in this evening to share our vision. Tonight, you will hear valuable information pertaining to the future of Health and Physical Education Department, and more significantly, how the students will reap the benefits from a healthy body and healthy mind. To begin the presentation, I call upon Tori Young. Tori Young?
Thank you for this opportunity to share our presentation with you. As teachers in the North Penn School District, we are invested in the district's mission to educate the students in our schools, engage the families, enhance our community, and create lifelong self-reliant citizens. As a Health and Physical Education Department, we play an integral part in our students' academic lives. Our goal is to prepare our students for a healthy life in body and mind. Our department would like to share our vision and direction of the Healthy Body, Healthy Mind campaign. The role of a Health and Physical Education teacher in 2014 has changed dramatically since many of our own experiences in the gymnasium or health classroom. We would like to show you what Health and Physical Education in North Penn School District is now.
In the elementary schools, physical education provides our students an opportunity by exposing our students to a variety of physical activities. Our students are able to discover what motivates them to live a healthy lifestyle and remain active. Students are introduced to health-related fitness concepts and the importance of setting goals to attain a desired fitness level. In addition to the comprehensive PE curriculum, we supplement learning through a variety of other physical opportunities such as smart start, fitness nights, biking and rollerblading programs, ramps such as literacy and motion, jump rope gloves, intramurals, and our ever-popular Iron Knights Triathlon, which is going into its fourth year with over 1,100 students participating. At the middle school level, we're committed to our faculty and to our staff as we move forward promoting healthy lifestyles, both in school and out. At the middle school, physical education is a fitness-based curriculum. Functional fitness is a huge part of our program. With teaching and proper technique, students will increase their balance, flexibility, core strength, muscular endurance, muscle strength, cardiovascular endurance, and metabolism. As the students best use the codes, they will be able to perform daily life activities without fear of injury.
The Health and Physical Education staff at North Penn High School believes in the development of a healthy, physically active student with an understanding of personal wellness. A graduate of North Penn High School should have the skills necessary to analyze the effect of regular exercise and how it plays a role socially, physiologically, and psychologically. Students should be able to incorporate and synthesize knowledge of exercise principles, training principles, and health and skill-related components for personal use. The lifetime activities in our program, which are important components of a person's wellness, include but are not exclusive to the following: health decisions, health in society, anatomy, athletic training, emergency care, aquatics, lifetime fitness, lifeguard, racket sports, adventure education, personal fitness, and team sports.
So, the fitness staff created gas to promote our games and activities in sports, and we just wanted to talk to students who come out, be active, and enjoy those company.
Hey, I forgot to talk about gas, and I remember, gas day for games after sports. It's a whole good shit back, and I'm sure it's going to help the Central Park and Duster and Longview High School. I love the rock, I love the break ice, try adventure education, skeleton and shells. It's an awesome activity.
Everything makes us something little. Not learn, that is, train for something that's very important to you in life. You can achieve anything that you want, and once you achieve that goal, it is really, really amazing. That is, it reminds me every day that I did something that I was really hard for, and it means a lot. And through the whole experience, it was really fun, from the training to the actual triathlon. And passing the finish line was really awesome, because I am an Iron Knight.
I'd like to introduce my colleague, Deb Buckner. From Professor John Rady's book Spark, he states, "What makes us move is also what makes us think." Evidence is mounting that each person's capacity to master new and remember old information is improved by biological changes in the brain brought on by physical activity. It's often said that a picture paints a thousand words. Physical activity and exercise change the learning state into one appropriate for retention and retrieval of memory. The effects lasting as much as 30 to 60 minutes, depending on the student. Imagine how much more information students could absorb if their brains looked just like that picture on the right. Blood traveling to the brain at a faster rate feeds the brain nutrients it needs: oxygen and glucose. Glucose is to the brain what gasoline is to a car. Each time you think, you use up a little glucose. Scientists know that brain cells have an especially high rate of metabolism, so the brain requires more oxygen than any other organ in the body. It's amazing to think that the brain only makes up 1/50th of the body's total weight, and yet it uses a fifth of the body's oxygen. A lack of oxygen can also result in fatigue and a lack of concentration. Vigorous activity gives the brain its needed nutrients. "Your life can change when you have a working knowledge of your brain," states John Rady, professor of psychiatry at Harvard Medical School. In his book Spark, he explains the inspiring science connecting exercise and the brain, and demonstrates how it plays out in the lives of real people. We would like to share a sample of the case study from Naperville Central High School in the suburbs of Chicago, Illinois, the spark that actually inspired John Rady to write his book.
John Rady is a psychiatrist who teaches at Harvard Medical School. He spent years studying the link between exercise and learning. Is exercise to the brain the same functionally as exercise to the muscle? The more you use it, the more you can learn, the more you can learn. Exactly. He called the brain muscle instincts. The more you use the brain, the better it gets. That's why people are doing superset, people are doing crossword muscles, they're using their brains. But so does physical exercise. It challenges our brain, and just like when we challenge our muscles, they grow. So, so true does our brain.
Rady tells us the science goes like this. When you exercise, the first thing that happens is neurotransmitters are released into the brain, keeping us awake and alert. Then, after a few minutes, exercise stimulates our nerve cells to grow and connect, creating the perfect environment for learning.
I called it air flow for depression, which means that it's brain-free. So, it helps our brain cells stay young and perky, and it also helps our brain cells do what they're supposed to do, which is to grow.
At the University of Illinois in 2009, scientists found that 20 minutes of walking before a test raised children's test scores. And in a study of more than 2.4 million Texas students in 2010, kids with higher physical fitness levels were better behaved and had better test scores. Educators believe exercise will not only get kids fit, but will improve learning and academic performance. And they're putting that idea into practice for a group of students who struggle in reading and in math. At 7:45 AM, these freshmen and sophomores start today in the gym. The key is to get their heart rates up right before their most typical classes.
I like gym in the morning, how it refreshes me. Like, I don't doze off a lot, so I focus more on the teacher, more on lessons, more on everything.
One of the goals of this campaign is to increase the physical fitness levels of our students. By increasing health and physical education opportunities, a student's fitness and academic performance can improve in tandem. We often equate academic performance with test scores. Data has already proven that increased physical activity positively impacts all aspects of academic performance, including cognitive skills and attitudes, academic behaviors, and academic achievement. I'd like to now introduce my colleague, Jason Theodore.
At this point of the presentation, we would like to discuss the future of Health and Physical Education in the North Penn School District. On October 13th, our 13 elementary school physical education teachers will be receiving training to implement the 10.0 version of FitnessGram. We have been using an older version of the FitnessGram program for the last several years and are excited about the new enhancements that the 10.0 version provides. In addition to using FitnessGram 10.0 in our elementary schools, our future plans include implementing the program in the three middle schools as well. FitnessGram is a program that assesses our students' health-related fitness using a comprehensive web-based database to track our students' levels each year. With FitnessGram, students will receive a report that states their fitness level after being assessed on various physical tests during class. These reports can also be emailed to parents and guardians. Both reports provide valuable, informative information regarding their child's fitness We would also like to be able to monitor students' fitness levels from grades five through 12. In addition to our already successful extracurricular fitness opportunities, such as the Iron Knights Triathlon, Middle School Healthy Days, and Gas Night, we would like support to expand additional opportunities for our students. Our district tracks the BMI levels of all students in the North Penn School District. We are interested in studying the effects of BMI as it relates to fitness. Just like the Naperville High School example we showed you earlier, whose PE teachers started with a small group of students, we would also like to pilot a study here in North Penn. Flexibility and scheduling would be necessary for these students to apply aerobic physical activities for them in a controlled setting. We want to collect the data on these students' fitness levels and academic performances and work to track larger numbers of students in the future. One of the most successful events of the Elementary Physical Education Department is our annual Iron Knights Triathlon. We recently conducted an anonymous survey about our families' experiences, and I'd like to finish this presentation by reading one of the quotes that we received. "The whole experience has helped us to be a healthier family. Getting more rest and exercise has definitely been a contributing factor in helping my child to focus. It also gives her a concrete example of how she can improve her skills when she puts in the time to practice." There are so many times during the year when my child is having difficulty with new schoolwork, and I point to her triathlon experience. We discuss how each year she sets goals and works many hours and days to meet those goals. We talk about how at first some goals seem difficult, but through her hard work and dedication, she is able to obtain what she has set out to do. I cannot say enough about how wonderful this program is and how life-changing it can be for a child. We are so grateful for everyone who is dedicated to providing this experience in our district. We are excited and enthusiastic about implementing our new campaign. And just as John Rady stated, movement is miracle grow for the mind. We hope you will join us in helping our students achieve their fullest potential, both academically and physically. As a department, we look forward to working with you in our vision and direction through the Healthy Body, Healthy Mind campaign. Thank you.
On behalf of the Health and Physical Education Department, we'd like to say thank you once again. At this time, the department, they will take any questions that you may have for them.
Go ahead. You want to throw it out? You got something first. You were writing first.
Well, yeah. Clearly, this is a topic that's of extreme importance to me as superintendent. The impact of exercise and academic achievement is something I've been fascinated by for some time now, and I was happy to hear about some interest in doing some study here in North Penn with our students. Just today, I got an email across my desk about a school that's using exercise bicycles and getting the kids on those bikes first thing, and then actually doing some reading while they're on the bikes. And their achievement scores jumped up dramatically when they were engaging the body and getting that oxygen moving and flowing to the brain. So, I just saw it today, coming from another school district. So, I'm really excited about that. And of course, the other factor that I have a lot of concern about, just generally in our society, is our body mass index, our obesity in our children. And I'm just really encouraged with what our phys ed and health department is doing to be able to help to fight that battle, because that's something that is of extreme importance. We know that there are going to be long-term effects if their children are already fighting that battle as young children, as young adults. So, thank you so much for what you're doing for us. Vince, you had a question, then I have one other thought I want to give.
Yeah, first, well, I'd like to say congratulations on the Iron Knight operations. I've heard a lot of positive things from parents over the last few years about that. And that, I've seen plenty of the banners in different elementary schools. So, it's a pretty successful program for you. Part of your program, when you talk about beginning to track and to implement this, is it your expectation that you're going to be tracking the people who... I mean, this is going to impact scheduling, which is going to impact everybody in the building, okay? So, that's going to be an issue for you. The question is, what's your plans initially, since you already have a way to track some people? The question is, how would you implement it with the current scheduling? Somebody can... Go ahead, answer. Be careful, they can't hear you on the television.
Right, but...
Just go to the podium, Deb.
I just wanted to ask if you could just rephrase the last part of your question.
We were looking... One of the things you guys talked about was scheduling would be a challenge, and one of those, maybe this is the second last bullet point, I think it was. So, have you given some thought to that, and how might you do that? What would you do? Would it be a pilot, just with some students, just to see what the impact would be? How would you do that? Tori? Deb?
Depending on the level of student, elementary, middle school, or high school, the plan is fluid at this point. It's a multi-year campaign. So, well, we hope to be a multi-year campaign. So, if we're looking at the current school year, we've already discussed some options that could be possible already without altering schedules and taking time away from where they're already in their academic classes. We wouldn't be taking them out of an academic class. It would just be creative within their existing schedule.
Depending on the level, I got that point. My... I want to specifically know, though, like, you have the ability now to track some of the students, their fitness levels and their performance levels. How are you specifically going to tie it all together to make your point?
We've tossed around lots of ideas as to how to do that, one of them being through a performance tracker. And we just need a little more time to work together as a committee through this campaign to iron out the details.
And we can provide some assistance with that, too. If we look at...
Awesome. I mean, that was one of our...
Thank you. If we look at with the FitnessGram software, what ability there might be in the software to be able to dump the data out into a spreadsheet, then we can look at tying that together with student achievement scores. So, I'd certainly be, and I'm sure technology also, would certainly be willing to help you with having that conversation as well.
Thank you. That was one of the things where we were asking for support in order to do so. Thank you.
I think it would be really a positive way to take this initiative forward, because as you produce evidence of result, it makes it more valuable to the administration to make decisions about scheduling and changes and what they could do with this program. But it's all based on, you know, success and evidence, and that's important for our own kids. I mean, that's the best for us. We like to see our evidence for us. And I think if you're able to combine what you already have now with some of this data and be able to come forward with a positive, you know, evidence-based program...
There's a lot of potential.
Yeah, it'd be a lot easier for us just to talk about how we're going to modify and modernize the department. Because that's important.
As Jason said... Excuse me, I apologize. I thought you were done.
No, that's okay.
We're really excited about this. This is sort of our ground floor, and we're really ready to get it up and running to look further into what we can do this school year and beyond.
So, you have achievement levels by grade or by age?
By student.
By male and by female? Because I just saw a bunch of kids running around, having a good time.
We can aggregate the data.
How do you... Oh, he's doing good, she's doing good. I mean, how do you... You have a means of measuring that, rather than... I'm not trying to be funny, but I see a bunch... You're showing me a program you want institute with kids just running around.
Well, wait a minute.
Well, this is our existing program of showing how physical activity, physical education, how we're teaching children, that movement is fun, and it helps them in their future. It helps their overall health. It helps them in the classroom, it helps their behavior. So, we're educating them within our classroom setting, K-12, on how to move, how to measure their heart rate, how to be in their zone for 20 minutes, the things that we would consider ourselves the experts in as Health and Physical educators, to instill in the children so they can do it not just in our classes, but outside of the class.
Maybe you can explain a little, just very briefly, what's measured in the FitnessGram software, and how does that information get in there?
Okay.
I think that might answer Mr. O'Donnell's question.
You said a word, which made, for some reason, made me think of our buddy here, Bill. The kids are going through this program now. They're now exercising, just like a sports program. You know, I think it's rare, but, you know, you don't want some kid to have a break a toe, have a heart attack, something like that. Does this program just let the kids do some activities, and you don't monitor their health? Is monitoring... I guess the question is, are you going to be able to monitor their health in any of these? Like, when they're done, do you check their pulse? Or... That's what kids go to your next class.
Specifically through FitnessGram?
Can we have one of the members to speak specifically on the FitnessGram component?
Yeah, that'll be good.
I can't hear you.
If you're asking specifically about the FitnessGram, which is going into the elementary schools...
Right.
My colleague Jen Johnson is going to speak more about the FitnessGram. That's going to roll into the 13 elementary schools on October 13th.
That's the software you're talking about, right, for the elementary schools?
Go ahead, Jen.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Johnson. Your question is regarding FitnessGram? I take it, the program?
Well, I guess... This is brand-new.
Right.
I've never seen this before. We only have so many minutes to try to absorb our questions real fast. You guys are familiar with this, we're not. We see a program, we see a bunch of kids running around. I'm there, great, recess. What are you showing me? Are we supposed to just hire somebody to watch these kids run around, and they all participate?
No, it's much, much more organized than that.
The program in which Diane is making reference to is FitnessGram. It's a scientific database for health-related fitness components, and it's assessment that's computerized and web-based reporting system.
So, you're going to be able to monitor these kids, so if something happens, is there like one person in the program? Are there two, three, four people in the room?
FitnessGram is a... It's a health-related fitness... There's components. There's a cardiovascular... There's a cardiovascular endurance test, there's a flexibility test...
Okay.
There's muscular strength and endurance tests that all we administer, and then...
Every day?
No, over time.
Bill, we're there.
Over time. We prepare our students for those tests, we practice those tests with our students, we then test them, and we put all of that information into FitnessGram, which is now a web-based program for us.
And we are on the precipice here, folks, with technology that is coming out. It just blows your mind in terms of what I think we're going to have. You can put the Fitbit on, you know, as a bracelet on, and it'll track your motion and your steps and your level of activity, give your reports at the end of the day. Portions of your day that you were very active, portions that you were not. So, technology's impressive.
So, along with that, Dr. Dietrich, the new program is all completely web-based. Being web-based allows us as teachers not to have to be in our schools. It allows us, as with our students, not to have to be in the school to get to the program. This program now can be accessed from anywhere, as long as they have an internet service. That's number one. Two, there are now teacher and student applications that are available to download onto an iPhone and onto an Android. It is amazing. We can literally pull up our students on our phone or on our iPad and put in their data. Or, they can go and do that. There's tests that these students can take at home, and we get reports based on them. There's more opportunities, as I mentioned, for the students to interact with the program. They can not only track their steps over time, they can also track their minutes. And 60 minutes is the big number that everyone's trying to achieve. So, they're able to go into the program and track their own time. Not only can the reports be given to the students with this new program, we can email all of that information to our parents, which explains to them, gives them a picture as to how healthy their child is. If they fall within the healthy fitness zone, it tells them to stay there and maintain it. If they need improvement, it gives suggestions to those students and the parents as to how to improve those goals.
And the other thing, the thing that's funny, I was just showing Josie, the thing that's nice is with the access anywhere, they really can use it as a family tool as well, and not just...
Correct.
This is something we do in gym class. I was showing her, my new phone comes with a pedometer, a heart rate monitor, a calorie counter, blah, 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 blah. You know, this gives really the ability for doing, for having kind of that comprehensive look at the fitness level of the child, which is really very... look at the fitness level of the child, which is really very valuable.
Help me out. This will be done by, be performed by the existing gym teacher?
Yes.
Okay. So are we adding more work to the gym teacher?
No.
Oh, so it's just.
We already do it.
So just adding the program?
Yes.
Frank, I think Josie has her mic on.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to ask, is it, sorry.
It's okay.
Is it voluntary or is it, if you're in the gym class, you're being monitored?
Yes.
For this program? Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Okay. Deb, a final thought?
I was, I was just going to talk about, I think, one of the questions was relating to, the, the program is based on individual ages, so the criteria is very different for someone, for example, who is 10 years old versus someone who is 15 years old, under each of the areas. And so we are monitoring and teaching them in order for them to be successful in those areas. For example, today in the gym at Gwinnett Square, we are working on finding our target heart rate zone. What does that mean? What numbers do I need to keep my heart in for those 20 minutes in order for me to have what is considered a cardiovascular endurance workout? What does that mean my body feels like? If I don't have a heart rate bar to hold on to, which they did today, if they don't have that, what does that mean? Am I hot? Am I tired? Am I sweaty? Am I thirsty? Is my heart beating a little bit faster? Those are things we teach them so that they understand how their body feels, so that when they are exercising correctly, they understand that they're feeling correct. The science is being taught, this is just an avenue for us to pursue at a little bit higher level technically. It's lovely to have the technical support now and the apps, for example, for students, for those who are motivated especially, to approach it from that perspective.
Does, does this program have what you, Kurt, what you said about those, I've read about these things you can buy.
Yeah, we're, we don't have all of that yet. Do we have heart rate monitors in some of the schools?
We use heart rate bars at the elementary level.
The bars.
In the middle school, we are using the monitors, yes. And the high school also does.
What elementary schools were you thinking about targeting as a pilot program?
It would be for all the elementary schools.
Well, I thought you said, you want to start a pilot program. Was that just selected schools or?
We're still working all that out.
Those are going to be determined, yes.
I'm sorry?
We have not determined which schools would be doing that to start.
Anglett? You can't hear.
Okay.
Well, wait, I just want to make sure. Okay, so you're going to set up some benchmarks for fitness and you said the progress and those benchmarks are set up by age, not grade, right? Is that fair to say?
Well, they're tech, they're technically broken down, healthy fitness zone is by, by age. So in case there's a student, for example, in your sixth grade class who may be older or younger, so it actually goes by their, by their age.
Cool. I wanted to make sure, because I thought it was by grade, that's why I wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I think that has a lot of possibilities for us. I think the technology should, the reason why I think you got a couple of questions about technology is it's, it's so innate for some of us and for others not. And for our kids, it's obviously built into their lives daily. So that's why, I guess, you get a couple of questions like that, because I know what it's like for me when I use the gym or even my phone, and we were just making a joke because you were talking, I said, I could tell you what my heart rate is, just about four seconds. But it'll be a great program if we can put all that together.
We're very excited about it.
Very helpful for us and our students, and it benefits families everywhere, so.
Right.
If I could just indulge everyone, just, I'm just so impressed that we have so many members of our Health and Phys Ed Department. I know there'll be individuals that are going to stay behind after we do our brief presentation on concussions, but if, very quickly, Jason, if you could just start and go around very quickly, introduce yourselves and what school you teach at presently. And do it quickly, guys, but do it.
Jason Theater, I teach at Montgomery Elementary School.
Tori on North Penn High School.
Jennifer Johnson, Nashville Elementary School.
Todd Ruhner, Pendale Middle School.
David Fernhead, North Penn High School.
Marty Bauer, Pembroke Middle School.
Jonathan Fluck, North Penn High School.
Chris Ryan, North Penn High School.
Steve Young, North Penn High School.
Jane Joe, North Penn High School.
Michelle Beach, North Penn High School.
Nicole Peersky, Pembroke Middle School.
Jeff Childs, Pembfield Middle School and Pendale Middle School.
Howard Mattinger, Pendale Middle School.
Jim Parrish, Pendale Middle School.
Phil Bartle, North Penn High School.
I'll sit down.
William Burnett, Pembfield Middle School.
Ray Unis, Pembfield Middle School.
Laura Ante, Pembfield Middle School.
Kristen Hott, Pendale Middle School.
Peggy Cott, Pembroke Middle School.
Leah Began, Pendale Middle School.
Dana Johnson, Sheik, Pendale Middle School.
Kitty Ruhmeyer, Pembroke High School.
You'll be here as we finish tonight and we'll ask more members just to mingle with you and just ask some more questions, but thank you again for the presentation. I'm very proud of you. Thank you for all that you do for North Penn.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
We also have a very brief presentation this evening on the matter of concussions. We've had some discussion about that from public comment, and we thought it would be helpful to have this matter being, given more attention so that all of our visitors and all of our individuals viewing from North Penn Television at home might learn more about concussions and the importance of, of what's going on in that area. So Betty Santora will be doing some presentation here. Betty had been in charge of this area before she moved to her new job in elementary education director position, but she was so kind as to agree to share, excuse me, to present this evening. And also then, we'll have some presentations also from some other folks, Sally Kaufman, for example. So Betty, go ahead.
Great, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the school board and also members of administration, and good evening to our community audience here this evening. As Dr. Dietrich has indicated, prior to my position as the Director in Elementary Education, I was the Director of Student Services and Special Education. And this evening, I'm just going to do a brief overview of the procedures that we have in place in our school district for concussions. Along with me tonight, I have Mrs. Sally Kaufman, who was the Department Chair for our Nursing Services, and she will join me in this presentation. Are we self-moving these slides? Are they moving them?
Oh, yeah.
What did I just, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm on the wrong one. All right, I don't know what I did here.
It's also like, you gotta hit fly.
Thank you.
Go to slide.
So I first want to start tonight with talking about the measures we have in place for sports. So the packet that I had passed around on the table is the actual packet that has to be filled out for any student that is going to participate in any sports here at the secondary level. And that form is called the PIA, PIAA form. So you can see that that's a very detailed packet, and what it includes, it's, it's comprehensive information that must be filled out by the parent. So the information from the parent or the guardian really just talks about the health history of the student, personal information, and emergency contact. Also in there is a signature verifying that the student and the parent both have signed off on their understanding of concussions, the symptoms, the reporting, and the prevention. Also in the form, it talks about the physical evaluation that must be done by a medical doctor, and all physicals must be dated after June 1st for the fall sports and within six weeks to the start of the winter and spring sports. Also to let you know that North Penn also has an all-sports policy coverage, and that means that students are covered in the event if they do not have medical insurance and there would be an injury. If a student does have any injury while playing, they have to go through the recertification process, and that has to also be certified and signed off by a doctor, and that form is also included in that packet. Some of the measures that we have in the district pertaining to staff members, all of our coaches and our club advisors must be certified in concussion training yearly, and that's part of the Senate Bill 200. So before any coach can begin training, begin any kind of a scrimmage, any kind of a practice, they have to go through that concussion training, which is an online training, and they have to print out their certification, and that's actually filed with our athletic director. About two years ago, we had our elementary PE, teachers also take the training yearly. We thought it was a good practice because we have students that are involved in March Madness, so they could have exposure to getting a concussion. Last fall, all of our school staff received a presentation by the school nurses in, like I said, in 2013, just to look a little bit deeper at the definition of concussions, what symptoms are, and the look for is for children. So Mrs. Kaufman, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit just on that presentation last year?
Yep, get the microphone. Yes, each of the nurses gave it in their school to all their teachers and to any questions that were asked, and they actually have the presentation on their G drive so that a teacher can look at it again if they want to.
So the next item I have up there is just looking at the protocol when we have sports concussions, and there is a procedure that is in place. So when there is a concussion, the athletic trainer, it's his or her responsibility to notify the school nurse. The nurse then shares the information with the student's counselor and the PE teacher. Each student is looked at on an individual basis according to the doctor's order, which then would say what the restrictions are, both physically and also academically. If a 504, which is just saying if a student would need accommodations, and if that's deemed necessary, that's discussed at the child's study team. The protocol for any kind of concussions or all concussions throughout all of our schools would follow a similar procedure. Most of the times, we find out, or often, from, a parent will come into the school nurse or to the school counselor, and they will let the school know that there is a student who has a concussion. So once again, we look at each student, we look at the information presented by the doctor, and then also we sit with the child's study team to determine if accommodations are needed for the student. And those accommodations are always developed by the school team, along with the parent or the guardian.
No, that's, that's really what happens. I would say we work with the phys ed teachers, we work with the counselors and with the nurses as the team so that they know what they can and can't do in class.
So when we look at resources here that we have in the district, about a year and a half ago, when I was in my prior position, I started a small team of various folks throughout the district, and that could be school nurses, guidance counselors, teachers, and also our representative from Brain Steps. And we would meet several times throughout the year as a committee, and we would talk about ideas, really look at the data that we had, talk about how we can support parents, and also look at the practices that we have in place. So our hope is, you know, that that committee will continue on, it will continue to improve, and also streamline some areas that we need to focus on as we continue. The next resource that we have is Brain Steps, and that is a statewide organization that deals with concussions in every district. We have a partnership with Brain Steps through the Montgomery County IU, and they support our schools. And we look at that as really as a tier-two intervention. So when a student has a concussion, and if the symptoms continue to go on and the team feels, the school team feels that they need to reach out and get other support, that's when they call on the folks from Brain Steps. And that's where they come and they meet with the team and the parent, and they try to give them other interventions. All of our school nurses, they keep a record of all concussions, and I'm going to let Sally talk a little bit about that because since she oversees the nurses, she can just tell you what we do.
So each, each school, we have a U drive that only we have access to, and so we have like a sheet, and we know how many concussions there are, how many are carried over from the previous year. We make sure they, I know if the phys ed teacher is aware of it, and we know if they've been cleared by the doctor for phys ed or not. So I can go on and access that if we need numbers at any time.
So currently, when we look at some of our data, looking at our high school sports from grades nine to 12, we have currently, right now, for the fall sports, approximately 366 students. From August to September 30th of this year, we had 17 students, athletes, that had concussions. Since then, 11 have been cleared, and we have six that are not cleared. So that's the current data that we have. So we would ask ourselves, well, what does it mean to be cleared? Well, you have to have a doctor's note on file, you have to pass the impact test with the trainer, and I have listed there what kind of test that is. That's a test of memory, speed, and reaction. And all students take the impact test as a baseline, but when you have a concussion, you're required to take the post-injury test. And then the third piece is the return-to-play protocol. And then the last piece of data I put there about the high school is that the non-sports concussions, we have right now at this point, according to Mrs. Kaufman, about 11 that are not related to sports.
What are non-sports, walk in the hallway?
Hit my head on the locker.
No, it could be a motor vehicle accident.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Could be an outside accident.
It could be a motor vehicle accident, they hit their head driving in a car, you know, in a car accident.
Oh, so they have an accident outside the school when they come to you?
Yes, a non-sports concussion is not something that happens.
But is this on our property or outside? Or it could be both?
Could be anywhere, but it's mostly outside.
So they come to you?
Right, and, and they.
And we've had 11?
Excuse me?
We've had 11?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Even if it's, even if the concussion didn't happen at school or at a school activity, we still need to be cognizant of the fact that the child's had a concussion, and the doctor may be making recommendations about what sorts of activities the child should or should not be participating in in school. That's why we keep track of that.
And that would be both physical activities and also classroom activities, where sometimes students need to have some academic accommodations because of the fact that they had a concussion.
Yeah, that's why we work very closely with the counselors. That is correct.
But that's just for high school tracking?
These numbers are just for high school.
But do we track for?
Yes.
Middle and, okay.
So that is really the presentation for tonight. I gave you the packet so that you can look through it to see how extensive it is with the information that has to be filled out for students when they partake in sports. And yes, we do keep data at all levels, and the nurses keep on track of that.
I just happened to think, earlier this year, I happened to see on the internet, or let me back up, when new or innovative, when new ideas come out, things that can help prevent concussions, do we have anything in place to say, hey, that looks like a good idea, let's start checking it out, let's do something? And I say that because there was an article I saw on the internet or the local paper, local paper, and I brought it to Doc, brought it to Doc's attention, took us a little while. It was supposedly mouth guards, some guy, instead of $1.99, these are like $11 to $15. But I'm, it's my understanding, these may help, not the foolproof thing, but they may be able to help in way if a kid is hit, the way the jaw is pushed back, something like that. So even though that's an example, are there things in place, I don't know what, but you guys, you know, are, see the hospitals, the new inventive things coming out, are, is there a program in place that it means, when we see something new, we buy it if it's going to help the kids?
That's not, our presentation here was just on concussions, what they, and you're referring to more what they do in sports, and Betty or I don't really have anything to do with the athletic program. So I don't know whether, what they purchase there.
Well, how about any of the gym teachers? Sally, can I ask you a question? I mean, the L I spotted these, this article, I mean, you guys, when you see something, do you, you bring it to your principal's attention or, or that guy back there?
Now, please, we're bored out of the atmosphere.
All right, Doc, I can't hear you, if that's okay. Frank, hold on, he can't hear because he's deaf, remember. I want to ask you, how rapidly can we put in place a 504? I mean, minutes?
Well, what happens is that has to come in front of the 504 team, and then we have to do an actual questionnaire that we ask, you know, does that, do they qualify for this? Do, and there's about, I think there's about 10 or 12 questions that you answer, and if they come out yes, then we bring, then we bring it, the counselors bring it to the families, and then we have a meeting with the family and the student. Sorry, we have a meeting with the family and the student.
Does that, does that, is that procedure sped up if the doctor, the family doctor sends in?
Well, it's not, no, it's not sped up because the doctors first, usually the first couple of weeks, they have a protocol that they follow, which is basically the brain rest.
Right, right.
And then they might say they can come back and start, and we might not need a 504. Within two to three weeks, when they return, they may be back to where they were before. The only reason you would be, you would bring in a 504 is if, if there was continued problems with the concussion, and then there was some academic difficulties, then you would have to create a 504. But that wouldn't necessarily be the first stop 'cause you'd have to see the progress of the concussion. Many of them, within two or three weeks, are back to, um, normal.
Gotcha.
Anybody else?
Mr. Brown?
The, uh, the six that are not cleared, am I to assume that all of them have a 504 associated with that, or?
No, those are, um, not necessarily. Those are not cleared through the trainer yet, which means that they haven't maybe passed their second impact test. That's still probably within the first week or two or three that they've had it, so it, th- these are not long-term yet.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Anybody over here?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, I'm gonna take public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board tonight, please step forward, state your name and address, and talk about the comment, or the presentations tonight. By the way, why are you signing in? I mean, if you've gotten a chance to look through some of these forms, they're, they're very, very detailed to help anyone understand the situation, and they are very thorough. I've seen some of these filled out, and I have seen some 504s over concussions, that's why I asked that question. Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Yes, uh, good evening, and my name is William Patchell, I live at 404 Bonnie Lane. I've spoken many times on, uh, health-related issues, I've spoken many times about concussions, and, uh, I'll try to keep this brief and not throw too many things up on the wall as I did last week. I know it was, uh, it was difficult for some. But i- in conjunction with the presentation which we have just had, two or three week, two or three meetings ago, I had discussed the body weight, and I brought to the attention, 30% of these kids are in five and six. That means they're obese or near obese. And that gentleman over there, Mr. Sullivan, said, "What do you want us to do about it? We can't do anything about it." "Oh, okay." I said, "The fundamental purpose of this school is to improve the academics, to improve the, the physical well-being, and in every possible way, bring all those up to where we would be the leading high school, the leading district in the Commonwealth. These are, these are objectives that are well possible to be reached." My son goes to the Citadel, that is rated number four in the country for, for the entire student body of, of health. He gets up at four o'clock in the morning and they run five miles. Okay? They're monitored constantly. If you don't have the proper, I tell you what, you can be passing academically, you're out of here physically. You don't meet up. So there's institutions that require very, very high standards, because in life, you will need high standards. Because when a person graduates from a high school that is 300 pounds or whatever it is, I tell you, hi- his possibilities of getting employment are, are somewhat reduced because when they look at, "This person's gonna cost us a fortune on our medical program. Thanks for dropping by." Good evening, and many topics are pressing the board and the public. As you know, I have focused on the football situation, concussions and long-term health of their players. Last week, three high school players died. Isaiah Langston, Demario Harris, Tom Cattinelli. So sad this loss. Why? I might have been able to save them, but it was too late. The parents want to listen to John Fogerty. "Have you ever seen the rain coming down on a sunny day? I wanna know, have you ever seen our tears coming down on a sunny day?" That's what the parents, that's what they have to deal with. "Oh, I thought I was doing the right thing. Oh, he had a concussion. Oh, broke his neck." You can't go back. Every time you have a concussion, it's serious. It builds, and we don't know about the long-term effect. It's starting to come out now. Fifty-year-old men, oh, he can't even remember where he lives. It's very, very bad, we need to take this extremely seriously. And when we have a total number of concussion that is deemed scientifically, I'm sorry, son, you can't play anymore. And I'll tell you what is gonna happen. With all the hacking, I tell you what, the HIPAA, it's almost a joke, because somebody's gonna hack into these, into these medical records, and you know what? Some corporation's gonna buy it, and they're gonna say, "Well, he's 50, I don't think we're gonna take a chance. He, he could be brain-dead when he's 50, and don't hire him." And that's what that information is gonna do for people. They got their credit cards, I guarantee you, they'll get their health, health information, it'll be on a little list nobody ever even knows about. And then they say, "Well, what happened?" "Oh, yeah, when you were in college, you had a lot of hits, you weren't, you weren't drafted, and you were just going along on your normal life." Well, I tell you, there's many, many examples in the NFL where people are near or very, very sad. And I can't give you the names or the thing, and this is why the NFL had that, had that, uh, litigation. And they settled for seven, $740 million. You know what it is? That is ridiculous, because the long-term ramifications of this is gonna be monitoring, it's gonna be people suffering dementia. They're gonna be hospitalized, and their family's gonna have to bear the burden, all because, "Oh, yeah, I, I was really a great hero once upon a time." So this is very serious, and I think we need to take it, and if we can't improve this situation, and I've discussed, I had a good conversation with Mr. Bartle for about an hour, and we, we arrived at a lot of situations that, that we are having common ground on, we are making progress, but it's very, very important. And I'll tell you what, the parents, if your son had a concussion, one or two, you know what? Don't sign the permission slip to reintegrate him, because I'm thinking about that situation, that poor young man out at Michigan. I get, I get pretty upset when I see the situations that goes on, and I'm not saying it happens here. He was reinserted into that game. That man took a terrific hit, and you know what? The god, the god of that game, let that coach, Brady Hokie. Well, you know what? That man should have been actually jailed. To let that young man go back into that game, and if you wanna go see it, you can go to that game, and you'll see that that player takes his arm and jams it up, and, uh, Sean?
Mr. Patchell?
Yeah?
Please address the board.
Okay.
The issues at hand.
That young man, Shane Morris, I'll bet you, when he's 50 years old, with that hit that he took, and if you go to max preps and you go to different, I guarantee you, there's somebody on the internet writing down every single hit, every concussion, and you know what? That's valuable information for an employer.
Bill, Bill.
All right.
We talked about this in the parking lot.
All right, we'll move on to Title IX. I'll make it pretty quickly, 'cause I have two minutes.
You're failing to do that.
Title IX, I was told we were happy.
Mr. Patchell, you're failing to do that, so focus for him.
Okay, okay. Title IX, I talked to Mr. Dietrich, Dr. Dietrich, and I talked about Title IX. Did you say we were about $50,000 in deficiency between the, uh, between the boys and the girls?
Yeah, there's a differential that's approximately that amount that we are working to close.
Okay.
And, uh, we report, you know, periodically to the Title IX compliance offices.
I did not attack this, and you, you gave the inference that I had attacked Title IX on not being good, I called it two and a half. The reason I said that, because I know there's a favoritism, whatever, whatever it may be, maybe by, it's, it's, it's characteristic that football is elevated to the number-one sport. It's in every high school, it's in every college, they got coaches making a million dollars. What's that all about? It's, it's wrong, it's improper, it's not appropriate, and I, I can't condone it, I have to tell the public. This is a, this is an evil situation. Okay?
Mr. Patchell, you do not have unlimited time tonight.
Okay.
This is a work session, and I will stop you shortly, I'll give you another minute.
Okay, the only last thing I wanna talk about is, when I'm at the board, I'm pretty upset because when we go through these things, they said, uh, comments and questions, comments and question, comments and question, comments and question. Not one board member has ever questioned anything coming up. Well, I'd like to bring up one thing about the wage rates.
Oh, Mr. Patchell, we were just given this, we weren't even shown this in advance.
I know.
How are we supposed to compile questions?
No, I was talking about the prior board sessions.
No, no.
It almost sounds robotic.
Well, don't ever say that.
Okay.
This, this board spiritually debates everything, even the spending of a nickel.
Well, that was a very thick document that was given out, and I don't imagine that everybody could scrutinize. I just read the Medical Affordable Medical Care Act, had many pages, and I bet you, very, very few people in Congress ever read it.
The Affordable Care Act has 1,842 pages.
A little light reading for the evening. Lastly, about health, about health.
Please make your point, Mr. Patchell. Mr. Patchell, make your point and wrap it up. You've got 60 seconds.
Okay, lastly, the enter virus. "Oh, how many kids have this? How many kids in this district have health insurance?" "Oh, we don't know, we don't have any records of that. We're not gonna make a record." You know what? Every kid in this school needs to have health insurance. That, that Bollinger policy have is a joke. It's an accident policy. It is not health insurance. It is not health insurance.
Mr. Patchell, you are now asked to leave the podium, please.
Okay.
All right. That is not health insurance.
You are asked to leave the podium, Mr. Patchell.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I had to come to that. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board after that wonderful experience? Any further comment for the work session from the administration or the board?
I wanna spend a nickel. Thank you.
Duly noted.
I wanna spend two.
Thanks for coming out, guys. I know some of you, some of my down low.
In the spirit of debate, I do not.
I get around the world's schools, I'll be stopping by. Motion to adjourn this work session. All those in favor? Let's do it.